Okay, good afternoon. Today is Monday, February 17th. We're at Nashua High School North and it's the HR Committee meeting. Today, without further ado, we have Mr. Rodriguez, Director of Technology. I was going to say take your stand, but you did that before I had a chance to, but it's okay.
I'm going to stand.
It's a committee meeting. So, congratulations. And the committee have a chance to really interview you and ask you some questions, but before they do that, would you please tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. I graduated from Pittsburgh State University. I grew up in Pittsburgh, Massachusetts, and with a criminal justice degree, had no plans of going into IT at all. So, it was kind of a, you know, let's try something else. So, I went to college and then I got my first master's degree in higher education administration. Had aspirations of becoming a vice president or a president. That didn't work out well either, so I decided to go back to school and get my master's in IT. And here I am now, working as a director of technology, so.
Oh, thank you. I do have to do something. I forgot the roll call.
Okay.
So, I'm going to do that right now. Ms. Odom?
Here.
I'm here. Ms. Brown?
Here.
We also have Dr. Mosley.
Yeah.
Ms. Oguera?
Here.
And Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Okay? All right. So, and these people here have a chance to ask you some questions. Any questions would you like to ask Mr. Rodriguez before we could continue? Did you have a chance?
You've been working in the department for a while now. What do you see your biggest challenge ahead of you as director?
Sure. Aging devices and Chromebooks. Those are the two, I think, biggest issues that we're going to be facing in the years to come, just because we have such old computer equipment. Finding a refresh plan for that and hopefully I'd like to achieve that through the technology plan moving forward.
Looking at that, can I follow up?
Sure.
Have you looked at other districts that lease? Is that something that you, as director, might want to do for our district?
It's something that Mr. Donovan and I are definitely entertaining at the moment as an option to move forward, in terms of just getting a good set of Chromebooks, you know, every four to five years. One of the things that Google has done is that they've upped their auto expiration policy. So, instead of the typical three to four years now, it's more five to eight. The thing is, though, the devices maybe aren't built to last that long, because they're not as well-built as a laptop. And typically, you don't really want a device that's four to five years old, because even more chances they have missing keys, broken screens, and whatnot. The repairs to, the cost to repair a device isn't really worth it, because you could spend $30 to replace a screen and the device is only $70. So, what's the return on that? Yes, you get a new screen on a Chromebook, but is it really worth it? So, the four-year range is what we'd like to do, and not just with our Chromebooks, with our desktops and laptops as well.
Okay.
So, our leasing program is something that we're definitely looking into.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Brown, have anything to ask?
I was trying to think of something.
My IT question the last time. You asked about the switches.
Oh, yes. I don't remember what I asked about the switches. Can anybody remember what I asked about the switches at the last meeting?
It's okay.
Oh, the, actually, I don't know. I'll have to think about it for just one more second here. I did have a question about it. I forgot.
Mr. Guarino, you have any questions for Mr. Rodriguez?
I don't really have any questions. I just want to say, welcome to, welcome to the district.
Thank you.
But I don't really have any, any questions.
No questions.
Or comments.
Ms. Odom?
I have another one. Have you worked with E-Rate? I know Mr. Farron Koff was a big supporter of E-Rate, and we did save a lot of money through what was done. Can you tell me what your familiarity is with the E-Rate?
I can tell you what we're doing with E-Rate right now. So, we hired a consultant to kind of take that off, take it off our plate, because E-Rate is very big and it's very complicated. So, for a pretty, for a pretty fair price, we hired a consultant who's going to take care of our E-Rate soup to nuts. And what we've done, even with the switches that we're doing, we have to put out an RFP for our switches to, for category 471, to get switches qualified for E-Rate purchasing.
Yes. How much are we paying the consultant?
Thirty-eight twenty-five a year. So, thirty-eight hundred twenty-five dollars a year.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I thought it was thirty-eight thousand.
I know. Glad you clarified that.
Thank you.
One million dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a question about how, is there any plans to address cellphone usage in the schools? Does that fall under your category and, like, curriculum-wise for kids, or making the schools a little more user-friendly?
Yeah, in terms, so I think that's a two-pronged question. I think with technology and cellphone usage, you get to practice like good digital citizenship, because it's like we have these devices that can do so many things and access so many things, but we have to be responsible with them. And that's something I think we, as a district, not just a technology department, have to address, because this is a very powerful tool. It can hurt others, it can hurt themselves, but teaching responsible usage is definitely something on my agenda. In terms of cellphone, you asked about cellphone coverage as well, like?
I guess more like Wi-Fi availability within the school, not necessarily even for cellphones, like computer Wi-Fi and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
It's a little spotty.
Yeah, so the, one of the things we're doing with the project, the switches go hand-in-hand with the access points that we'd like to achieve in the high schools at this moment. So, the switches that we need to get to replace our very aging switches will support, it's called high-density access points, so which will allow about 100 devices per access point right now. So, in the high schools, by the end of the summer, we're hoping to connect 25,000 devices combined for the high schools with the access points in the switches.
Dr. Mosley?
I just wanted to just add a couple things that, you know, I've been very impressed with Greg, that this is the first time in about, since I've been here, that, you know, Greg has been pushing the technology committee work and connecting it with the strategic plan. And I, at the end of the year, he's going to report back to the board along the lines of how that is connected, and that's listed in the strategic plan. The second thing is that part of the connectivity is like really developing the plan, and I don't think that's been very clear district-wide. For example, if I said to the district right now, "We're not going to be making long-term investments in the technology at our middle schools," some people would get upset. But the problem is, or the reality is, that we're not making those investments in the current buildings until we go through the construction project. In the meantime, a lot of Greg's work has been around addressing not just what's in the strategic plan, but also what's in the NEAS report. If you remember some of the points, and I can give it to the board too, for the new members, is that consistently throughout the NEAS reports, and I have the principals here, they can vouch for it, that technology was a concern, connectivity was a concern, access points. Many, some, some teachers are okay with students using these devices to do the research, which means that they don't need Chromebooks. They can just access and do their work on the device. The reality is, and just myself included, I have three devices that are connecting to this Wi-Fi. Now, am I using it all at once? No. It's just me, but we have kids now and faculty too, and guests coming into our buildings that are using multiple devices at the same time. So, that's our reality here. It's nothing new, but at the same time, our high schools are our flagships, and we want to make sure that our ships stay afloat when it comes to technology. Thank you, Greg.
Any other questions? So, I'd like to move to nominate Gregory Rodriguez, Director of Technology, district-wide for the 2019-2020 school year, at an annual salary of ninety-five thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Second?
Okay. Ms. Odom?
Yes.
Yes. I said yes. And Ms. Brown?
Yes.
It's been approved. It's three to zero. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome to the board. Again. Okay, the next thing on the agenda, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, is CTE Director Reorganization. And Ms. Oguera, can you?
Yes. Is this?
Oh, you want us to switch it around?
Once you want to do the guidance, right?
No, we was going to.
She was wrong.
We was going to switch it around, but she said, she's here now, so we can switch it around.
Yeah, good.
Okay. Congratulations.
Hello, thank you.
I'm glad you were able to make it at this time. So, we switched this around a little bit, so you can go next. So, Ms. Hackett, could you kind of tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. So, I'm originally from Nashua. I went to the University of New Hampshire, got a degree in business administration, and I was working down in Boston for an SAT tutoring company, and got the experience of getting to know a lot of school counselors in the Boston area, and that was great. I just saw that that was a career that I wanted to pursue, so I went back to graduate, back to school, to UNH, to get my master's in counseling. And shortly after graduation, I was hired at Clearway, where I worked with the at-risk population. I found that job very rewarding. That population is just, kind of has my heart, and I really learned a lot in those, in that time that I was there. And then I got the job at South as the outreach counselor. I worked in that role for three years. And I actually had some students that I worked with at Clearway at South, so it was a nice transition. I was working with the same families and some new families as well. And then four years ago, I moved into the role of school counselor with a full caseload of all types of students with, you know, a full alphabet, grades nine through 12. And I've been doing a lot of the college counseling in the past four years, and I've learned a lot in that role.
Okay. You have a great reputation over at the South.
Thank you.
And I wanted to know, how are you going to, what's the transition from South to North with your, with the students?
Well, with the students, you know, I do have the understanding that they're two very distinct schools, you know, it's the same district, so a lot of the, well, all the policies are the same. But it's, you know, for me, coming over to North, it would be just getting to know the culture. I've already had the chance to get to, get to know a lot of the staff, and that's been wonderful. So, you know, working with the students, it's going to be the same approach, but just the understanding that it's a different culture over here.
Okay. Do you have any questions? That you would like to ask? Ms. Odom?
Much like I asked Mr. Rodriguez, as you move from guidance counselor into the head guidance counselor, what do you see as the biggest challenge for you personally?
Well, I mean, I have absolute confidence that the counselors are professionals and they do their job very well every day. So, you know, I look at the role of the director as being an advocate for them, because what they do directly impacts students, and, you know, I just want to make sure that we are serving our students in the best way possible. And so, just supporting the counselors, I think it would be a challenge, but I look forward to it. I've worked with, you know, interns. I feel confident in my own abilities, and I just really like to help the counselors just kind of get to the next level to help all the students here.
Coming from being a counselor, going into this position, you must have had things that you thought, as a counselor, "Wow, I think I, it would be nice if we did this differently." Do you have anything in mind that you've seen that you think, "Oh, jeez, I think, you know, if I were in charge of this, I might be able to improve it by doing whatever"?
Absolutely. We're in the middle of course selection right now, so every day I'm in the computer labs with my students, and I see, I see things that maybe, wow, if I knew the database a little better, maybe I could make that more efficient. And so, I really look forward to working with IT, and, you know, just because I have that experience with, with the database on that end, and seeing if there's things that could just be made more efficient.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Could you give like one hard example, like concrete example of that, of something that you would?
Yes. So, when students are inputting, say they're a freshman and they're picking their sophomore math class, which is geometry, the system's not recognizing that they've completed Algebra I, because Algebra I is now two parts, so it's part one and part two. Computers should work for us, there might be a way to fix it, but we're just having to have students put in the notes to counselor that, "I would like geometry," and we have to manually enter it. That's just one example. It takes up time.
Do you have another question?
Do you, what do you think your management style is? Because now you're going to be more managing people and covering students.
I definitely am someone that kind of leads by example. You know, I, I would love to kind of, you know, be more hands-on with the counselors, just, you know, if they have questions, I want them to come to my office and ask. I'd love to meet with families together. You know, that is one piece of the job I'll probably miss, is working directly with families. So, I want that to still be a part of the job. So, I'm definitely a lead-by-example type of leader.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you. I don't have any questions or comments, but I just want to say, welcome, and I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. I do have a question. My question is, I'm just curious to know, how would you handle a student that has a crisis but need guidance? How would you handle that particular person that's been traumatized for whatever reason? It could be opioids or their home life. How would you handle that? Plus, directing them and to going into the right path?
I mean, I think it's all about, you know, using my knowledge of community resources, resources within the school, and just setting that student and the family up with support. It's all about a wraparound approach and, you know, meeting with the student, really figuring out what it is that they're dealing with, and finding resources for them within the school and the community.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so I move to nominate Jacqueline Hackett, Director of Guidance, Nashua High School North, for the 2019-2020 school year, at an annual salary of eighty-six thousand five hundred.
Second?
Okay. Okay, so move. So, can I, Ms. Odom?
Yes.
Ms. Brown? Yes. And I also say yes, so congratulations. You've been nominated for the Director Counselors. Thank you.
I'd really just like to thank the administration at South too, for being so supportive of me throughout this whole process. They've really been awesome, especially Keith and Lori, and I really look forward to working with Nate and his team.
Okay. We have one more process to go through after this, is to the full board. But congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck to you. Thank you.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is CTE Director Reorganization. No, that was in a revised copy. That's fine.
That's our.
What?
That's our.
No, because it's in a revised copy. Hello, Mr. Richards and Mr. Burns? Okay, you're on.
I can start and I'll, like I say, I'll start and then I'll let the two, I'll let Mr. Burns and Mr. Richard, and Ms. Patrick jump in. So, part of what happened, probably like two weeks ago, Mr. Burns, Mr. Richards, Donna, we all sat down and there was a proposal presented to myself around some reorganization of CTE. Part of where this comes from is that there's been some, some conflict around the CTE programs in terms of programming consistency, and really, when we look at this, it has to do with along the lines of the budget. And both programs share the budget. And so, then just by default, it becomes a little bit of internal competition between both high schools. So, what was proposed by, several proposals were presented. One was to hire, you know, a CT, keep the, hire, hire another CTE director. Another one was to hire two assistants for the CTE director, which would cost more money. And so, part of what we wanted to do is be, to be prudent about this, but also thoughtful. Since I've been here, there have been four different CTE directors, so, you know, we're trying to bring some consistency here, but at the same time, really support our students. And so, part of what one of the proposals was, and I'll let the principals talk about this because they proposed it to me, and I thought it would be prudent to bring it to the board, is just to consolidate and just have one CTE director and then have an assistant. And that model's not, it's not foreign to our district, because we also have a athletic director, Lisa Gingrist, who also has assistants that help her facilitate the daily activities for the city in terms of athletics. So, that's just a summary. I'd like to hear, I'd like the board to hear the principal's thought process and rationale behind this proposal, and then we can certainly open up for questions if people would like.
I think Dr. Mosley summed it up pretty well. So, we've had, this model that's being proposed tonight was a similar model, that it was in CTE not too long ago, to be honest. Just recently, it's been a co-director model, and I think some of the issues, and Mr. Burns can hit me if I'm saying anything wrong here, but when you have two people that are co-running a one department, so we kind of see Nashua High School NTC, you'll hear, Nashua Technology Center, which the CTE falls under. They, and CTE uses what's called the Perkins Grant to fund the two-year CTE programs. You have some programs here, you have some programs at South. You have somebody that's here every day advocating for those staff. You have somebody at South every day advocating for those staff. As you can imagine, there's relationships forged at each building. There's one pot of money, sometimes, you know, in one decision has to be made, and there's no arbiter, or maybe Donna or Dr. Mosley is the arbiter at the end, to say, you know, but that's not an easy position to be in either. So, I think, just moving forward, I think if you have one person where all the decisions get funneled to, that's the decision of the CTE director, I think it'd just be easier. You know, it'd be like Nate and I being co-principals, trying to make the same decisions. We get along really well, but I wear purple every day. He's got his blue on. There might be some loyalty lines drawn, you know, not that we couldn't get through it, but again, I think just sometimes it's cleaner if, you know, I think, moving forward, just when you have one person making decisions for a large department, I think it makes for an easier, cleaner model.
I would tend to agree on that. I think it's important to have, you know, a single, single person setting the vision or the mission for the department, and then everybody kind of working towards that common goal or common mission. And I think it's a lot easier to have that when you have a director and then an assistant, whereas the assistant would be, you know, supporting that director's vision and goals, whereas if you have two co-directors, they might not necessarily see eye to eye and have the same things in mind as, as far as moving forward. So, it's not just a, you know, a Perkins funding thing, but it's also just an overall, you know, CTE, what is our game plan? What are we looking to do over the next few years? And make that, make that move forward. So, I think it's really important to just have that one person that, you know, answers, answers that call, or ultimately is the one that decides those things.
I do have a question. Having said that, since you want one CTE director, does that mean that one CTE director have more responsibilities? Is the pay going to go up? How, how are you going to address that particular piece?
Yes, I don't think that's something that we've really talked about yet, but we would have an assistant director, and that assistant director would be at the opposite side. So, I think our, our initial plan would be that there'd be somebody at each of the buildings on a daily basis, that they'd communicate with one another. They'd handle the responsibilities as far as doing the observations, evaluations of staff, and, you know, collaborate with one another. And then on days where the director has meetings outside, or if the assistant has meetings outside somewhere else, then they'd be able to cover for each other, spend maybe half a day at each place, or move around and work with the teachers to make sure that the, the staff is getting the support that they need.
So, we all have two assistant directors in both schools, plus the one director? I just want to...
Sorry, one director and one assistant director.
Oh, one, okay, one assistant director.
And we'd still have the head teachers as well at each of the buildings, like we currently have.
So, do we have an assistant director now?
We do not.
So, we have to hire one?
Yep. So, instead of having a co-director, one at each building, we'd have a one CTE director and then an assistant director for the CTE department or NTC center.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
This is kind of along the lines of what Cory was saying. Since you'd have one person at each building, would the director then have to handle the responsibilities of the assistant at one of those locations, and also the director responsibilities?
I don't know. I think they'd...
I think what, go ahead. I don't want to interrupt.
Oh, no, I think, so we're having two people leadership, I think they would come to each building, you know what I mean? So, I think, in my mind, I would imagine two and a half days at each, so you have face time with the director and also with the assistant director. And I think the responsibilities probably would be divided, you know, similar to Nate and I with our assistant principals. We, you know, divide responsibilities, but ultimately the buck stops with us in regards to, you know, decisions, things like that, such as observation and evaluations. They would probably divide up staff, you know, between them, themselves, to figure out, you know, who's going to be supervising staff and things like that. So, I think the director and the assistant director would sit down and figure out what those shared responsibilities would be, and also what the responsibilities of the director would be.
And also too, if I can just use the model that we use for athletic programs, when Lisa spends about two and a half days in one building and then goes over to another building and spends another two and a half days, so they would be actually rotating throughout. It's not just the seat, the assistant wouldn't just be in this one building. The assistant would be responsible to be in all of the buildings as well. Part of that is that there's been, you know, just to piggyback on what Keith has said, when it really boils down to the financial pieces to this, and really, really essentially internal competition for the Perkins Grant, it creates, and it has created some tension between the two high schools. It just has. And so, part of this is, it's like having a co-principal. Sometimes you have these things called co-superintendents. There's always that feeling like which one, who's actually in charge of what. So, part of what, we want to just give you an idea of what we're thinking, but also, it's indicative of us to give you a job description as well, of what that assistant would look like, and the difference between the director and the assistant. But it would be really essentially following the model we already have when it comes to our athletic program. Sorry, Ray.
It's all right.
I should be looking at you as well, so. But it's just, it's, you know, I don't live it. We're not living it. There, the two of them are living it. And so, we've had some issues or some concerns around scheduling, one program offering something else than, than the South. So, we're really looking to have some parity between the high schools in terms of program and really funding.
I'd just like to say that this is the model that we had since the 1990s up until Marshall Derry retired, and that was somewhere between 2007, 2010, somewhere around there. We still have the former job descriptions on file, that, so we do have a basis to, you know, we can look at them and fix them up to what, what works now for them. So, it's not a new thing. It's actually going back to the old thing. You know, and there was a time when we had one, one, yeah, never mind. Never mind.
It's okay. So, why did it change? I don't understand.
But we had a hard time finding a, when Marshall left, we asked Mary Ann to step up, but it was because we had a really hard time finding a director for the CTE. And then it just kind of became one, and then it went to two. We had one in each building, and, and it was never even. It was never equal, even with before this time.
I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Fitzpatrick, and I'm sorry that I didn't call you on the roll call.
No, that's, I was in the audience at the time.
But that's okay. You're here.
I just wanted to say, in addition, in speaking with the CTE director at the state, the CTE director pool is pretty shallow, and so, that's another consideration in staying with the two CTE director model, that there's not a lot of candidates out there.
Okay, Ms. Odom?
I was going to say, from my experience, if I remember correctly, we had a hard time maintaining, keeping the director of CTE. We had quite a few people go through that. Personally, I would like to see the job descriptions, because I think that that's probably going to delineate a lot of the salary between the director and the associate director. I think that's the way to go. I think we've seen a lot of, well, I don't want to say turnover, but, but it's been difficult having two people in charge. That, that's been obvious. So, I think this is a good move, and I want to support it. position, but at the same time, I agree what, what Ms. Odom said around continuity. We've had, since I've been here, I've only been here like three years now, we've had, you know, another iteration of cycle of different CTE Directors, Directors, and no one's fault. I'm not here blaming anyone, but certainly, what's the definition of insanity? You keep doing the same thing over again, so we're just looking to bring some continuity here.
I really think it makes sense, and it will cost us less, so.
It's a good thing.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add to that? Dr. Mosley?
So, I'm just asking the Board and asking the HR Committee, our expect, the expectation is to bring back a job description to you for, for review, for final approval. Is that fair enough?
That's fair enough. Two, two job descriptions.
Yes.
Both, the Director and the Assistant Director.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Appreciate everything.
You guys do a great job. Really like you both. I don't know why, but I do.
They're always smiling, every single time they come in here.
Gloria, they're good men.
They are good men. They are. We're lucky to have them both. Thank you. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the revised, you have a copy of the revised personnel recommendation? Dottie, did you get a chance to look at that? Why?
The revised?
The revised. I just gave you the revised one.
I have a couple of questions I'd like to go into non-public about.
Okay. All right. Which one do you want to go on?
Do I need to pause this?
No, we're not in non-public yet. Okay. Before we approve the personnel recommendation, you would like to go into non-public.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay. There's a motion to go into non-public, so I'd like to...
Second.
Okay, so, Ms. Odom?
Yes.
I say yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Okay, we're going into non-public at 6:30 PM. Okay. Our last thing on the agenda is personnel recommendation, revised on February the 17th, 2020. Have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the personnel recommendations of February 17th, 2020. I second.
Okay. Dottie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Three to zero is approved. I have to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion adjourned at 7:56. Okay.
6:56.
6:56. Okay, 6:56. Dottie?
Yep.
So, all three of you?
Yes, yes.
Okay. HR Committee adjourned.